I'd like to welcome everybody to this April 12th council meeting. The first item we have is a public hearing, so before we do the pledge of allegiance, we're going to do the public hearing. And it's to consider the rezoning of the following city-owned property. It's a portion of 123 West Liberty Street from a PF Public Facilities to a C2 Central Business, and 364 Foundry and 347 North Huntington Street from an R3 High Density Urban Residential to an OC Open Space Conservation. Mr. Mendel, can you please explain the public hearing information?
Yes, thank you. These are properties owned by the City of Medina that were... The one on the 120th portion of 123 West Liberty is a city-owned facility that we've had for many, many years. 346 Foundry and 347 North Huntington are properties we acquired over the last several years that are adjacent to Ray Mellert Park. These are all zoning districts that needed to change for a particular nature of their situations. So on February 11th, the Planning Commission reviewed the requested rezonings by the City of Medina. After reviewing the request in the staff report, the Planning Commission recommended the requested rezonings to City Council, and it's been through Finance Committee. There's a 30-day public notice requirement, and that has passed, and now there's a requirement for a public hearing in front of City Council as part of the legislative process to make those map amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd entertain if anybody would like to speak in favor of the rezonings. Is there anybody out there that wishes to speak in favor of this? Is there anybody that wishes to speak against the rezonings? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. If you please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Heffinger. Lamb.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Shields.
Here.
Simpson.
Here.
Coine.
Here.
Hazel Time.
Present.
Reading of the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
I move that the minutes of the regular meeting on March 22nd, 2021 are submitted or prepared and submitted by the clerk be approved.
Second. Any discussion on the approval of the minutes? Will the clerk please call the roll on the approval of the minutes?
Lamb.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Motion passed, six zero.
Reports of standing committees. The Finance Committee met prior to council this evening and will again meet in two weeks prior to the council meeting, and several items will be, of course, discussed in the Finance Committee and moved on to council. Health Safety and Sanitation, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Health Safety and Sanitation held a meeting prior to the Finance Meeting tonight. What we did is we got an update for what's going on now this current year from the Police, Fire, and Sanitation Department and proposed projects that we'll have to go through the budget hearing for the upcoming year. Other than that, there's no other meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Properties, Mr. Shields.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled, no report this evening.
Thank you. Special Legislation, Mr. Lamb.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have...are still working on in special legislation, we're still working on an ordinance that deals with demolition, and we're not ready to have that meeting to discuss it quite yet. And we also have an ordinance on the agenda tonight which passed out a special legislation, went to Finance Committee, which is the ordinance on feeding wild animals and feral cats, et cetera.
Thank you. Water and Utilities, Mrs. Hazel Time.
Thank you, Mr. President. No report at this time and no meeting scheduled.
Thank you. And Emerging Technologies, Mr. Rose.
Thank you, Mr. President. No meeting scheduled and nothing to report.
Thank you. Reports, our requests for council action. We have several for the Finance. We have 2168 Budget Amendments, 2169 2020 Carry Forward, 2170 Cyber Security Liability Insurance Renewal, 2171 McDAC Grant for the Police, 2172 Expenditure of $15,000 for Mason Custom Builders for the Police, 2173 Purchase of a 2021 F-150 Truck and a 2022 F-600 Chassis from Montrose Ford for the Water Department, 2174 Agreement with OHM Advisors for Comprehensive Plan Consultant, 2175 Memorandum of Lease for 406 South Broadway for Peaceworks, Inc., 2176 Discussion Regarding Electric Irrigation Funds, 2177 Agreement with ODOT Traffic Signal Maintenance, 2178 Easements for Spring Grove Street Bridge Replacement, 2179 Create Fund Number 171 for the American Rescue Plan Act Fund, and 2180 Obtain Appraisal to Convert Municipal Court to a Community Center. Reports of Municipal Officers, Mayor Hamwell.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regarding the COVID-19, Medina County remains in the red level, asking the public to please remain vigilant and avoid large gatherings, wear masks in public, wash hands frequently, and social distancing. Updated information on the business opening, safety protocols, et cetera, on the city website as well as Medina County Health Department website. All of the efforts of everyone, along with the ongoing vaccine administration, has greatly reduced the number of cases in our county as well as hospital admissions, per Dr. Schubridge, and I'd just like to commend the public on their efforts with that. A Fiber to the Home, the group that started in southern Medina County is now working its way up through Seville and Guilford Township into Montville. And for city residents to have the opportunity of fiber to the home, which would then create some competition versus just the existing cable, you need to take a survey at www.madina.litcommunities.net. And the more surveys they get completed, that tells them that there's enough of a customer base here to make it worthwhile to do the same in Medina. I'd like to commend Jansen and the Forestry Crew for assisting the McDowell Phillips House with digging 14 holes on March 30th for the planting of 14 new redbud trees on April 10th. They were very appreciative of the city's help. City Hall doors were unlocked last Friday, April 2nd. We're still requiring masks and social distancing, but we did want the City Hall and the offices to be available to the public. I discussed that with Krista, the Health Director, and she agreed the same. Like to briefly speak about, in my opinion, misinformation continuing to be spread by the Savior Courthouse Committee. In November, they told voters that the county courts would be torn down if they didn't vote in favor of their issue, and also that the county would not proceed without the city. Both of those are not true. The county had already committed to not tearing down either building, and the county is in the process of going through our boards and commissions to start the foundation work and build a new building without the city. Now they're telling voters, "We are trying to overrule the vote in November," when really the vote in November required the city to go to the voters, just like we are. They're also telling the voters that this parking deck right out at City Hall here is going to be turned over to the developers. The city owns and will continue to own the deck. The deck is a public parking available for everybody. No spaces are reserved for the development, nor will they be. Do not be misled. Collaboration with the county on the court makes the most sense operationally and fiscally for them to operate their courts and us to operate our municipal court. And then last but not least, I just wanted to mention, we do videos with our industry because rather than have the city talk about our processes and our customer service model, sometimes it's better to have the businesses that experienced it say the same thing. So Ravago did a video on their $500,000 build out at the corner of West Smith and Lake Road, and they've also prepped for a comparable addition in the future, which would be $1 million of square foot under roof. It's one of a number of worldwide companies in Medina, and we use this video as an attraction to draw on other industrial companies to keep the tax base strong in one of the lowest income tax rates in the state of Ohio. And our residents all benefit from that by having a strong workforce in our industry and commercial. To view the video, if you go to the city webpage, www.madinoh.org, then Economic Development, then there's a list of business expansion testimonials to view. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Durham, Director of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First reminder that the City of Medina does have an income tax. The income tax is...all residents are required to file. The filing deadline this year has been pushed back in the state of Ohio to match the filing deadline for the IRS and for the state, so it's all May 17th. And we do not collect the income tax here at the city ourselves. We have Rita collect it for us, and they're available online at ritaohio.com. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huber, Law Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Thank you, Mrs. Marshall, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few items to note for council and the public this evening. The next Energy Special Improvement District Meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, April 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to noon. Due to COVID-19 guidelines, the meeting will be held via the Zoom platform. We are working to get the district expanded to the City of Brunswick. Anyone that wishes to attend the meeting can send me an email at kmarshall@madinoh.org, and I will send them the Zoom meeting link. Also, the next Economic Development Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, May 4th, at 8:00 a.m. Also, due to COVID-19, we will be using the Zoom platform for this meeting as well. And again, if someone is interested in attending, they can email me at kmarshall@madinoh.org, and we will send them the Zoom meeting link. We've been getting a lot of requests for ribbon cuttings, and those are still on hold at this time, and we are hoping that we can start them again in June. So we will be working with the Health Department on the best way to proceed for these events. And then the last item is, we recently finished a new marketing piece titled "Live and Work in Our All-American Hometown." Looks like this. And we will be using this to promote Medina and share this with our companies that are recruiting workforce out of the area, as well as sharing this with our local real estate brokers that have clients interested in moving to this area. And I did place a copy of it in council's mailbox, so you can see that, and that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Walter, Fire Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a brief reminder for the public as to the importance of ensuring that we have working smoke detectors in our home. Our department was notified around 4:00 a.m. this morning, requested for a house fire in the city here. At the time of that fire, the home was occupied, and I'm just happy to report that the occupants were alerted to the fire because they had working smoke detectors in the home. They were both able to escape with their pets.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Mendel, Planning and Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Worley, Parks and Recreation Director.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just two items to note for the Rec. and the Parks Department. We have two events coming up sponsored by the Recreation Center. Saturday, April 24th, we'll be hosting an Earth Day Cleanup at Reagan Park. That will start at 9:00 a.m. and go until 12:00 p.m. Registration is required online on the Medina Recreation Center website. You can also find the link on our Facebook page. Those that participate in the cleanup will be given a free seedling from Medina County Soil and Water. The second event is a spring...a senior spring fling for 55...for those 55 and older. That'll be taking place April 29th from 11:00 to 1:00. There's activities, prizes, and music. Again, registration is required for that. That will be outside, weather permitting, at the pavilion outside the Rec. Center. The update for the Parks Department is our sports associations are starting to ramp up. Games begin this week. All associations are responsible for following the restart guidelines as outlined by the state. So there's going to be some increased use in our parks. Additionally, the Medina Lacrosse, Bagatoway Lacrosse Tournament was permitted through the Health Department, and that will be occurring April 24th through the 25th. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Kenny, Police Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report.
Mr. Bacoli, Service Department.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no report this evening.
Mr. Patton, City Engineer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just wanted to alert council and the public. The city currently has three projects out to bid through the Engineering Department: our Ray Mellert Fitness Trail Phase 2, the rebid of the City Hall Parking Deck Detention Basin, and our annual concrete pavement joint ceiling project. All those will be open within the next two weeks.
Thank you. We have confirmation of mayor's appointments. There's two of them. If there's no objection, I do both of them at one time. Hearing no objection. We have Charter of Review Commission, Joe Nichols, term expiring 12/31/25, replacing Leah Nichols, and Historic Preservation Board, Paul Wood, resident, expiring 12/31/23, replacing Paula Banks.
I'll make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointments. Second.
Any discussion on the confirmation of the mayor's appointments? Will the clerk please call the roll on the confirmation of the mayor's appointments?
Rose.
Yes.
Shields.
Yes.
Simpson.
Yes.
Coine.
Yes.
Hazel Time.
Yes.
Lamb.
Yes.
Motion passed, six zero.
Notices Communication Petitions, there's non-unfinished business, there's non-introduction of visitors. Members of the public who have been given the opportunity to speak on any issue or concern which pertains to the city during a portion of the council agenda devoted to induction of visitors. All comments shall be directed to the chair in a reasonable time limit of approximately five minutes will be imposed. If there's a group, please appoint a spokesperson. Speakers should approach the rear microphone and state their name and address, so it will be entered into the minutes. Members of the public will be afforded the opportunity to comment on other portions of the meetings determined by the chair or by a vote of the majority of council members present. Is there anybody that wishes to address council at this time? Yes, ma'am, in the back.
I'm Jean Pritchard. I live on High Point Drive, and I'm the president of Nantucket Condo Association. Well, I know most of you. Just quickly, I want you to understand why I'm here. I'm a lifetime resident and taught physical and health education in Medina City Schools. During that time, I coached various sports, ran many clubs, had Mr. Shields on student council, and Ms. Powell as a cheerleader. So I realize the importance for activities for the youth in Medina. Plus, I worked for the Parks and Rec. Department when I was in college. I am making a request for council action concerning equity with the pool, swimming lessons, and splash pads. The current status of swimming lessons precludes minorities or low-income families from receiving or signing up for lessons. The current waitlist for swimming lessons from 2020 shows 260 families currently waiting for lessons. Also, if a child in a family is not a Rec. Center member, they must pay more for lessons. Having children learn how to swim then allows them to use outdoor pools productively and not cause problems for the guards. We are now into the second generation of families that do not know how to swim. Plus, all swim signups must be done online, which many low-income families do not have. Splash pads are a benefit to the community as a safe, fun alternative for those that lack swimming knowledge. To eliminate their opening causes low-income and minority families hardships as to affordable recreational activities. Knowing the city's commitment to diversity and your acknowledgement of racism as a public health crisis, I would think you would want to ensure that all recreation programs are designed with equity in mind. The city closed Medina splash pads at Ray Mellert Park and at Greenwood Park last year and announced plans to close them again this year. The money budgeted for the splash pads, $18,500, was requested by Jansen Worley this winter and approved by council to pay for a new heater and memorial pool. Last year, most cities around Medina and across the state opened their splash pads with restrictions and without incident, and plan to do the same this year. The governor and the Medina County Health Department have no restrictions in place that would prevent the use of splash pads. Despite communication with Jansen Worley, Director of Parks and Recreation, discussing the community need and interest in splash pads, the ability of other communities to safely open splash pads, and the lack of governmental restrictions, he maintains that the splash pads cannot be safely open in 2021. In my research with other cities, residents, and the schools, I have come up with the following list of possible splash pad restrictions so Medina can move forward. Restrict number of people in the splash pads at any one time in the length of their session. Designate certain days a week for preschool and daycare groups, require reservations, and allow walk-ups if maximum number is not met. Ask residents to call in advance for reservation and allow walk-ups if maximum number is not met. Require masks and water diapers for babies and toddlers. Ask adults to accompany children and bring their own chair and water. Open splash pads certain days and certain hours a week. Ask police to drive by, monitor the splash pads, and interact with residents as time allows. Restrict splash pad use to Medina residents only. Distribute wristbands. Post rules and explain that the use of the splash pad and playground equipment is at your own risk. Instruct splash pad users to maintain a six-foot distance. Establish an appropriate splash pad cleaning procedure, and create a splash pad advisory group to support the use and safety of our splash pads, and I'm happy to volunteer. Although the community groups may come to the rescue at times for children in need, the city has a responsibility to all of its residents to provide the means for them to use facilities that taxpayers have paid for regardless of the resident's socioeconomic status. Those facilities are for everyone. Investing in community recreational opportunities for all is a way to build a healthier community physically, mentally, and socially. I have given Ms. Patton a copy of my request, an email from the Health Department saying splash pads can open, survey of other cities, and some ideas about how Medina can open the pads. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pritchard. Ms. Powell? Next.
Hi, I'm Michelle Powell. I live at 450 Birch Hill Drive. And I'm just here just to piggyback on what Jean was saying, particularly to the swimming lessons. In 2019, we were approached by a group out of Wasworth, the YMCA group from Akron, and they had put together a program called SOL, Saving, I think...I don't know what the acronym is, but it's based on saving children. And the reason why they started this program, because on Memorial Day, they found that there were a couple...some children that had drowned. And doing the research, they noticed that African-American children are like three times at risk to drown than their peers. Seventy percent of the children cannot swim, African-American, and 60% of Hispanic children cannot swim. Personally, when I found that out, I was shocked. So they gave us the opportunity through a grant to come and take on swimming lessons. We were only able to take one swimming lesson due to the pandemic. And having those swimming lessons, I'm telling you, last year, when we were approached by Deb Halleck to pass out swimming passes for our children, they were so, so excited to be able to go swimming. One of the reasons why the children don't go swimming is, of course, the parents were not able to take them to swimming. So with the Let's Make a Difference Program, we were able to go as a group and have volunteers to be able to watch the children to swim. So I'm just here to say that even when I was growing up, there was a problem also for us to even to go swimming. And what we would do in our neighborhood for swimming, we would get a bucket. And to us, that was what we consider our swimming pool. And now, when I notice in Union Square, they don't do things like that. It's a fight, you know? One parent might have a swimming pool where the other kid don't have a swimming pool. So there's always, you know, a fight going on. The manager that moved in, they have taken out the swimming pool. They cannot have a swimming pool. So of course, where's the next thing to go to? Children go to the splash pad. Splash pad is only so size, cannot hold over 300-something children at Union Square. So if they don't go to splash pad, and if they don't go to Medina Swimming Pool, then where are they going? They're at Jump Park. I've witnessed this myself. I'm at the swimming pool. Children cannot get into the swimming pool, of course, because they cannot pay for...they cannot pay for some of these activities that are offered in Medina County. Then what happens? The children go over to the Jump Park, and then they begin to tear up Jump Park, only because there is nothing for the children to do. Last year, getting those children those passes, I noticed that a lot of things that were going on in Union Square and also at the splash...over at the splash pad and over at the park, a lot of those things did decrease because the children now had those passes, and they were able to go to the swimming pool. So I'm just here to say, if you guys would consider opening up the Medina Swimming Pool, and hopefully we can get that splash pad where our children should at least go over and cool off on those hot days. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Powell. Mrs. Halleck, you had your hand up.
Hi, I'm Deborah Halleck. I live at 1100 North Jefferson, Unit D, Medina, Ward 2. I am not a cheerleader of jeans or student of jeans, but I am a classmate of jeans, class of 1970, and we're celebrating our 50-plus-one reunion this year. If you know it's spring, it's time for us to talk about the pool, Parks and Rec. And as usual, I think we have some of the same issues coming up each year, and I think we're developing some clarity on how to address those issues and focus the money, time, and dollars, limited resources to get the greatest benefit. Michelle has made it clear in the past several years that her need for swimming lessons outweighs the need for pool passes. It's very difficult for her to distribute passes to kids and families who can't swim. And they end up with passes and then end up in trouble when they aren't able to actually enter the pool. She's also indicated that it's been difficult to manage in her area, but also, I think, across Medina without the splash pads open. Kids are looking for things to do. They're looking to be outdoors. We want to encourage outdoor activity. And if at all possible, we'd like to work with the city. We'd like to work with Jansen, the Rec. Department, and help them develop appropriate guidelines to try to get the splash pads open, understanding that as things change, those rules may need to change, but we'd like to at least try to give the kids and the residents that opportunity. But I guess I would like to end my comments tonight by asking all of you on council, as you're looking at the budget, and I've looked at your budget reports, I've looked at, and frankly, your extreme budget needs for this year. And I guess I would just like to ask all of us to really look through a racial and socioeconomic lens as we begin to make the decisions for this year for how we want to spend those dollars. If we have outside funding to provide passes for the pool, I guess a question I would have is, how is that of value to our residents who have never had the opportunity or means or know how to swim? Or if you offer programs at the Rec. Center, how are they accessible for people who have no transportation or who can't afford for membership or classes or even have the technology capability to sign up for classes? I guess we all believe here, and that's why we're taking the time to talk with you today, that recreational opportunities that improve health and life skills should be open to every Medina resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address council?
Good evening. I guess I should start by saying my name is Lisa Hyde-Copp. I do not have a current Medina resident. I don't live here. I live in Cincinnati, but my parents...I grew up at 330 Woodland Drive in Medina. My parents have been residents for over 89 years, and the reason for my visit is I actually had not seen my parents for over 300 days. And during this pandemic, all I can ever see and keep in touch with my friends in Medina, I'm on the Medina Alumni Page. It's always going to be home to me. I post pictures when I'm in town. I'm on the roadside page. I interject with many of the residents here. It's still always going to be home. So, mayor and council, I put together during the pandemic a book that was dedicated almost in a resume format to the men in my family, not just the women that I'm trying to exclude, but going back into our past to the early 1900s, when my great-great-grandfather and great-grandfather moved here to settle in Medina. I feel there's so much being said about cancel culture. I'm so proud of this community. I've been a flight attendant. I've traveled all over the world. I've lived in different states. And when I come home and I see how everything historically has been preserved, from the McDowell House to the signage around town, I mean, people think that... that I grew up in the most beautiful quaint town ever. And I'm proud to say, you won't know it until you leave it, and then you come back. With that being said, I was a teacher, so I'm not going to read this verbatim for you. There are highlights in here. And what I've come before you tonight to request is a proclamation of South Broadway. We called it the Little Brick Street when I was growing up. My great-grandfather settled there, built a house by Andrew Greysinger at 544 South Broadway. My grandfather and grandmother, when they married, lived at 522 South Broadway. My grandfather, at age 17, bricked the first street on there. It was originally a dirt path. Both my great-grandfather and my grandfather were very active businessmen in the community. My great-grandfather, Reuben John, was county treasurer. He oversaw the county roads. He wore a lot of hats in town. He was an insurance agent, along with my grandfather, and also owned a shoe store back in the early 1900s. The reason I have come is asking for a proclamation. I did some research in German Village, some other Ohio communities, Chagrin. This was my pandemic project. I broke my leg, so I was set up for six months to do nothing but do some history on Ohio. I'm asking that South Broadway not be renamed, but have an honorary plaque for my family, who was one of the original families here in town. At my expense, my sisters and I feel that this is something that we can leave a legacy and we won't ever have to forget. When family names are brought up and where they came from, there'll be a plaque for our family. My idea is just saying the Hyde Street on the plaque and the years, 1911 through 1978. I'd like to add, in the end, combined four generations of Hydes lived on that same street, 167 combined years in four generations. So I thank you for your time. And this little project of mine, I would hope that you would consider. I think you've done a fabulous job as someone who grew up here. As I said, it will always be home. I'm very proud of the city and everything that you stand for. Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe we all received a cup of your packet, and a croque courts has it. But we appreciate it, and we'll take it under consideration. Is there anybody else that wishes to? Yes, ma'am? Yes, please.
I'm going to remove my mask because it's hot. Hello, everyone. My name is Carrie Huff. I've been a resident of Medina since 1976. I moved to Ontario, Canada for six years. I raced horses. Moved back here in 1996. I live at 530 West Mill Street, and we also own 532 West Mill Street. So we actually are right in the city, and we have two acres in the city. I've seen firsthand the upheaval of land in Medina County and the way the deer and wildlife have been forced to forage in the homeowners' front yards due to the newest Ryan Home development or the newest dentist office or auto parts store that has moved into our community. My husband, Mike Cuff, and I would rather put forth a solution rather than a complete lack of thought to come up with real-time solutions to help the animals and community versus ticketing the taxpayers. The Medina, Ohio Feeding of Animals Ordinance proposal starts off by saying no person shall knowingly provide food for dogs, cats, deer, geese, ducks, raccoon, fowl, or wildlife stray animals. First, this is a contraindication from the start due to the state of Ohio law, which is the head of all city law and protects dogs and cats under Section ORC 959-131, prohibiting concerning companion animals, AKA Goddard's Law. All dog and cats in Ohio are considered companion animals. There is no clause against a feral cat. As per your anti-feeding ordinance of dog and cat, you are violating Code ORC 1717-01B, as stated in Goddard's Law, and that is an act of cruelty, which is a felony. Dogs and cats are domestic carnivores with limited survival skills. Without human intervention, Medina, Ohio has overstepped state law, which gives precedence over a local ordinance. We need to support our community of TNR with Wendy Moroto, who has been a leader in Medina at helping the feline population stay under control. Maybe larger funding should also go to the SPCA because the $10,000 they were given was kind of a drop in the pan when it comes to all these cats that are running through Medina right now. We've trapped six in the last five months behind our house. There's a, on Lafayette Road, there's an apartment building. People leave, and the cats get dumped in our yard. We'd like to propose an ordinance directed at every apartment building in Medina, an amendment, a renting agreement to every animal owner that's coming in. All cats and dogs need to be neutered, spayed, microchipped. So ownership of these animals is legitimately tied to these owners. Then, when the burden falls upon us as good animal stewards, these animals are dumped and thrown into our yard. I would like the Felony Act, then, with Goddard's Law, to be put onto these people with the microchips that are then scanned in these animals coming in to these apartment buildings and being tossed out by these poor animal owners. Then, they can pay the bill. Because you know what? Right now, I'm paying the bill. I'm paying the bill to trap, neuter, release, trap, neuter, release. And most of these animals were not feral animals. They were thrown out. They were living under our woodpile in our yard. It was really pathetic. Some of them were starving to death. They were actually declawed. That is a real big problem in Medina right now. We don't get compensated for that. In fact, we're driving 35 minutes to one-of-a-kind pet rescue in Akron because nobody in Medina is doing this right now. The only place in Medina that is doing it, you can't even get into to get an appointment. They're so backlog. And cats can have three litters a year. They can get pregnant when they are nursing. So one cat in Medina, one stray, one dumped off, one feral, whatever you want to call them, can have 30 kittens. Mission Possible is really trying. They are, again, they're very backlog. In the state of Ohio, it is legal to feed wild animals. As I spoke with Scott Peters, he's the biologist at the Department of Agriculture Wildlife Division. He, we also understand a local ordinance can prohibit people from feeding. But in this circumstance, there is no solution being put forth. As we understand, the deer are owned by the state of Ohio. We have been told through the Wildlife Division that thinning the herd is an option. Since the deer have had so much habitat stripped away in Medina, do you understand that a deer only travels one half to one mile a day? And asking the deer, or thinking the deer, understand when their homes are destroyed by the latest development, that they need to pack up and move, is inconceivable. They adapt because that is the way they live and must survive. Since the habitat's destroyed, I'm going to be fined as a homeowner because my yard's being ravaged. So me, as a homeowner, I'm going to put a pan of food out and water, and that preserves my yard. Deer do not run into the Parks District. They don't want to be in your sterile front yard full of true green chemicals. They would rather have their natural habitat, but that has gone away at this point. We would rather start a petition to the state of Ohio again. Since they own the deer, to get the birth control started for three months out of the year, we would like to manage a hunt, not at $600 per deer option either, like we had spoke on the phone, Jansen, about this. And I know you didn't really think I was a very good animal steward as well, because I do feed the deer because they will destroy my yard. We understand the first 300 deer are easier to hunt, but the last 200 in a hunt are trickier. So we can manage a group of sharpshooters. My husband, Michael Huff, is a reconnaissance scout. We would have no problem managing a hunt in the city of Medina. Think it'd be actually pretty darn easy and pretty affordable. Food can be donated, and the shooters, the sharpshooters, can keep the meat as well. The object is to thin the herd, not make them extinct in the city limits. Proposals can happen, not just an ordinance with no merit or teeth aimed at the taxpayers in this city. The other issue to address, since people have claimed to be chased by wild deer, is planting some clover perennials through the park systems. Maybe the deer won't chase you. They don't chase people, by the way. If they're chasing you, you might have, you know, you might be near one of their baby, or they're young, or it might be during the rut. But really, deer don't chase people, and feral cats don't chase people either, which I know that was a problem, saying a man on Sturbridge said three feral cats chased him. That is inconceivable, and it's not true. Feral cats do not chase people. You know, there's a lot to be done with this, but nothing equals nothing. And what you guys are putting forth is absolutely nothing. You have no teeth to this at all. Let's address the issue with some reasoning and a helping hand for the animals who are losing habitat by no fault of their own. We would love to sit down with anyone in the council to talk about some things that we could do to amend some of these issues and problems. But by just coming over and citing me for being a good animal steward, for spending all of our money to rescue animals, to trap them so you don't have more kittens on your doorstep, that's not fair to us. And I'm not going to be treated like a bad animal steward because I have animals coming into my yard, ripping my apple trees down, eating my yard. That's what they do. And I'm being told I'm a bad animal steward. Well, I'm putting the pan of food out and a pan of water. That's what I'm going to keep doing because they leave my yard alone. Really, all I've got to say. If anyone wants some help with this, we'd be more than happy to work with any of you on council to come up with a proper proposition for every apartment building in Medina, to start trap neutering, releasing, and microchipping every cat in this community. Because they're all in my yard right now, and I'm kind of tired of it. It's a mess.
Thank you. Ma'am?
Good evening. Thank you. My name is Judy Summers. I am the Director of Operations for Rescue Me Possum Style, located right here in Medina at 3454 Forest Lake Drive. Our founder, Martha Wall, is here in the audience as well tonight. As animal advocates, and I'm touching on the exact same subject, as animal advocates, we are demanding that dogs and cats be stricken from the list of animals in your proposed Do Not Feed ordinances. Dogs and cats are identified, as brought up before, and protected as companion animals under ORC 959.131 as follows. A companion animal means any animal that is kept inside a residential dwelling and any dog or cat, regardless of where it is kept. It's a very clear definition of what a companion animal is. ORC 1717.01B contains clear protective language as follows. Cruelty, torment, and torture include every act, omission, or neglect by which unnecessary or unjustifiable pain or suffering is caused, permitted, or allowed to continue when there is a reasonable remedy or relief. Dogs and cats are domesticated carnivores, and they are ill-equipped to successfully survive without human intercession. If you prohibit your citizenry from feeding a stray companion animal regardless of any ownership status that was discussed at the last meeting, you will be legislatively promoting animal cruelty and usurping state law. The Humane Society of the United States has issued the following statement regarding animal starvation. The pain of an animal who lingers with untreated illness or wounds, or without nourishment or shelter, can be tremendous, sometimes even more so than those who are victims of directly inflicted violence because their suffering is so prolonged. Animals who starve to death experience a myriad of painful symptoms through each stage of this physical deterioration. Now, just how painful and cruel is death by starvation? I'd like to paint a picture. An initial loss of body fat is followed by muscle loss and atrophy, and ultimately, organ failure. In long-term starvation, so this is where cats and dogs are able to get a little bit of food, they have degeneration of the liver, cardiac changes, anemia, and skin lesions. When death does finally arrive, its most immediate cause is always cardiac arrhythmia or a heart attack. I'm going to let that sink in for just a moment. In closing, Mahatma Gandhi said, "The greatness of a nation and its moral progress can be judged by the way its animals are treated." I hold that the more helpless the creature, the more entitled it is to the protection by man from the cruelty of man. Again, Rescue Me Possum Style, we are a 501(c)(3) right here in Medina. Our emphasis is on death row dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name's Mike Huff. I live at 530 West Mill Street. I am not an animal activist, PETA member, a tree hugger, or anything like that. I'm a lifelong hunter, fisherman, and outdoorsman. But I watched the March 22 meeting online of the city council, and that's why I decided to come tonight. That meeting was hard to watch. It was like watching a group of men who had never been outdoors discuss wildlife habitat and wildlife behavior. Comments were made like, "I don't really think the deer want to be here." And, my favorite, "The deer can strike you with their paws." I don't know if any of you know deer don't have paws. They have hooves. No one at the March 22 meeting knew of the speaker that was here, Wendy Morado from Kitten Crazy. I guess none of you are actually watching the Medina Channel on TV because she has a TV show on there called Cat Chat. There's been 131 episodes over the years. But I guess none of you are watching it. She could be your best resource for dealing with the feral cats because that's her business. The deer in the city limits, they were born here. They grew up here. This is all they know. They don't dream of vast forests and rolling meadows. They're city deer. They don't know any different. Under your new ordinance, not feeding them should get them to leave. Over the last 20 to 30 years, the Medina area has torn down their natural habitat and feeding grounds so we can build more Ryan Home developments. The deer didn't leave. They adapted. And if we stop feeding them, they're going to adapt again by eating everybody's landscaping. And if you're getting complaints now, just wait. Me and my wife have spent over $10,000 landscaping our yard. We feed the deer, and guess what? They don't eat our landscaping. I can show you tons of pictures of our landscaping. It's beautiful. We have hostas, which deer love to eat. They're huge. You can even spray stuff. It smells horrible. The deer won't eat. You can buy plants that the deer won't eat. Now, we spent $10,000. We never got a beautification award, but that's another issue. We don't live on South Court Street. In the last six months, my wife and I have trapped six feral cats and paid out of our pocket to have them fixed, vaccinated, wormed, and flea-treated. That does not include the three that were tame cats that were dumped in our neighborhood that we found homes for. So nine in six months. We don't want these cats. My wife's allergic to cats. But they're here. If we stick our head in the sand, maybe they'll go away. I spoke with the Department of Natural Resources. They said many towns have tried this route only to call back in a couple years requesting to do a call. If you don't thin the herd, you're wasting your time. They also stated that feral cats and stray dogs are domestic animals. So under your ordinance, it's a misdemeanor if I feed them. So under your ordinance, it's a misdemeanor if I feed them. But according to state, if I stop feeding them, now I'm neglecting them, which is a felony. The ordinance states we can feed songbirds. Thank you for your permission, by the way, for allowing that. What about the non-songbirds? Hummingbirds, they're not songbirds. Can I feed them? Under your law, no. It says songbirds. My elderly neighbor, she feeds them. If you guys pass this tonight, hummingbird feeders attract wasps. I find that as a nuisance. Can I call 911 in the morning and report her hummingbird feeder? Some idiot will do it, because people call 911 for all kinds of dumb things. The last meeting, it was said that the ordinance will be difficult to enforce unless it's a nuisance. Under the legal definition of nuisance, an annoyance. There's a lady in our neighborhood who finds everything annoying. So that's going to earn me a misdemeanor. What about squirrels? The ordinance mentions nothing of them. Do they fall under the term "other wild animals"? Because that's a rather gray area. At the last meeting, I'm not sure who the attorney was that you have working for you, I'll call Matlock, said, "Can't really enforce it, because it'll be too hard." Mayor Lamb, you said, "It's not going to make the deer or cats leave." So the big question is, what are we doing? The answer, you're going to create neighborhood rivalries and fights. You're pitting neighbor against neighbor to tattle on each other. And the main thing it does is, it gives city council an excuse to say, "Hey, we passed a law. We did our job. Pat ourselves on the back. We did something." Even though you did nothing, you solved nothing with the cats, you solved nothing with the deer. We can do bow hunts in our parks and on the fairgrounds. The parks can be closed. The hunts can be done during deer season, and it can be done extremely safely. If you're bow hunting, you're not shooting more than 40 yards. We can close the parks, notify the people that live around the parks. It'll be closed this day. If we don't thin the herd, you're wasting your time. Under this thinking, why don't we do an ordinance to deal with all the panhandlers that are in the city now? After all, they don't want to be here either, just like the deer. I know the A C L U will not allow you to find them, but why don't we find the people that give them food and money out of their cars? If we stop that, maybe the panhandlers will leave town just like the cats and the deer. That's all I got.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address counsel? Ms. Walker?
Thank you for letting me be here. I am Shirley Ann Walker. I live at 426 South Broadway Street. I have lived there since 1985. I live near woods, which was turned into a beautiful park. We have everything coming there, and we love it. I wrote a letter, and I'll read it today. This letter concerns a vote you will make this evening concerning feeding of the animals prohibition. I'm requesting that the council vote against this proposed legislation. This is my second letter. The first was read at the Finance Committee. Initially, this complaint was about the deer population. Mostly, it was about deer eating the thousands of dollars in flowers, shrubbery, and trees that were planted in yards. I have heard some of these complaints myself, and I have highly recommended that these persons put up fences. This fencing will protect their investment of greenery and will also keep these persons safe within their domain. The nuisance deer complaint comes mostly from persons who have their properties near open spaces, parks, and woods. These noted areas are the habitat for deer, fowl, and other animals. These animals know no boundaries unless one sets them up. Initially, this legislation was about the deer, but now it includes all animals and fowl. It is about a handful of people being upset and angry because the animals enter their property and do what animals do. There were some complaints by persons who mentioned deer crossing the roads and streets and groups, and there were some accidents mentioned. I request a report of accidents and complaints of deer and the terrible attacks to people from squirrels, rabbits, raccoons, possum, dogs, and cats. I did receive the deer report, but not any gory details of the other animals. Concerning the deer accidents within the city limits, I might suggest as a reminder that the speed limits in our city are 20, 25, 35, maybe 40 or less. Heed the speed limits, watch for children and pets, bikes, and deer. Still, I am aware that a deer may jump into your car. Many persons find joy in assisting and feeding the animals that freely enter their yards. Several people I know are active in T N R for feral cats. Many continue to feed these cats, thus keeping them more tame than wild. And I would consider it a kindness to me if my dog wandered away and was cared for by someone until I was located to retrieve him. I would like to bring up the enforcement of this new law. As I understand it, an accuser will be able to report their neighbor for breaking this law. This is to be done in an anonymous manner. Call the police or city, but it will be better if the accuser has a photo or video. How nice and neighborly, but nasty. I propose that if this legislation is passed, and the accuser's name and address not be anonymous. It is said that if a person can report anonymously, more violations would be brought to light. It is my belief that a person who reports anonymously is ensuring frivolous and hateful incidents. Accuser information must be part of the public record. One should be entitled to meet and discuss with their accuser. I am also convinced that most of the citizens of Medina are not aware of this new law. I am certain of it. Perhaps it should go to a vote, and I have considered going to the Board of Elections to place it. In the 1939 Wizard of Oz, Oz states, "Back where I come from, there are men who do nothing all day but good deeds to confer, converse, and otherwise hobnob with brother wizards." I would suggest that there are more important issues in this city that should concern our leaders to discuss than seeking ways to arrest persons being kind to animals. Once again, I urge you as our lawmakers in our prestigious town to reconsider your vote on this law. Elections can talk, and I for one will always consider my vote seriously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address counsel? Anybody else that wishes to address counsel? Well, I have three emails that were requested to be read into the minutes. The first one is from David Blackmore at 221 Howard Street here in Medina. It says, "As council has deemed this issue important to the welfare of the residents of the city, I feel the need to ask some questions of council that I may have missed in the materials from the past meetings and the newspaper articles. I hope I will be granted the courtesy of a response. Can council provide the data to the public that created the need for this proposed ordinance? Damage to the property, injury to residents, was there a census conducted, indication overpopulation? Why did the proposed ordinance that has been discussed for years and started as a ban on feeding deer and wildlife expand to include virtually stray animals seemingly wild or not? Is the proposed ordinance not in conflict with the other sections of Chapter 505 Animals and Fowl, 505.04, 505.07a1, and 505.071c2? What is intended goal of the proposed ordinance? Reducing the animal population, limiting the possible dangerous interactions between residents and wildlife? Is there or will there be a mechanism in place to determine the effectiveness of this ordinance if passed? How is the ordinance going to be enforced if there is not an intent to pit neighbor against neighbor? I have a concern that residents that care for animals that are now wild but are lost or abandoned will have actions taken against them by the city when someone else, for their own reasons, turns them in. What then? My apologies for the last-minute delivery of this letter." The next letter we have is from Pat Walker at 523 East Friendship in Medina. Dear President Coin, More information has come about the Rose Company Liberty View Project that is proposed for the land between Solis and the federal courthouse on West Liberty Street. It turns out that the agreement groundling specifically provides that the apartment commercial building should physically connect to the city's parking deck near the Medina Municipal Court. Further, the residential tenants will have reserved spaces in the city's parking garage. That agreement that was accepted by the mayor and a few members of council on behalf of the City Development Corporation, commonly referred to as C I C State's Parking Agreement, subject to the approval of the City of Medina, Ohio, a designated number of reserved parking spaces will be made available in the public parking structure owned by the City of Medina, Ohio, located adjacent to the leased property Rose Company Liberty View Project to the residential occupants on the leased property. The total number of parking spaces available on the leased property shall be determined by the total number of residential units constructed on the leased property, as otherwise determined by the City of Medina, Ohio. No reserved parking spaces shall be available to commercial subtenants located on the leased property. The City of Medina, Ohio, shall issue parking permits to the residential occupants of the leased property upon proof of residency and upon payment of a permit fee. Each City of Medina, Ohio, issued parking permits shall be valid for a shorter of one year or the termination of the rights to the occupancy of the leased property. Additionally, the lessee shall have the right to connect to the city of Medina, Ohio-owned parking structure at one or more locations, provided the lessee shall submit plans to the City of Medina, Ohio, for approval, which plans shall not compromise the structural integrity of the parking structure. All connections to the parking structure approved by the City of Medina, Ohio, shall be at the sole cost and expense of the lessee and subsequent requirements of the City of Medina, Ohio. Further, that agreement provides that the Rose Company will pay $335 per month for up to 75 years to the C I C for the right to use the building on the former city-owned land. It turns out that in 2019, the city gifted the C I C the majority of the land of which the Rose Company Liberty Project will be built. There is no evidence that the C I C paid for the taxpayer's land that is worth hundreds of thousands of dollars. Tonight, the city is poised to take another step to give the C I C a further parcel for the city for the Rose Company Liberty View Project. The C I C is not part of the City of Medina. It is a separate corporation. Meanwhile, the city has put the courthouse issue back on the ballot. The city wants to relocate the Medina Municipal Court to the Medina County Courthouse at a cost of $5 million. I urge the voters of the City of Medina to vote no in May 4 election. The municipal court should remain where it is, and the governmental waste should be stopped. Thank you for your consideration. The final letter we have is from Rita Eastwood, and she did not give an address, but her email address is bbblacksheep@hotmail.com. Please read at the meeting. I am the daughter of a 93-year-old widow. My mother has loved all living creatures since she was small and was raised on a farm. She sows her love for birds, especially by feeding feeders she hangs in order to see God's creation up close and personal. She believes as many others that cardinals are your loved ones who have passed on. Thus, they are her favorite bird, and she has at least two couples that visit every day. To take that small joy away from her would be a travesty. With COVID especially, she cannot get out to have people in that she used to, so the only thing she has in life is to look forward to. It's one small thing that she can't do to feel a purpose of life. I know that may sound extreme, but you are 93 years old and homebound. Are you stuck in a time of life where people tend to forget about you? I know she is not the only one in this situation. I beg of you to please reconsider this law. I think it would do more harm than good. Although we are not in the city limits, we know many who are in the same situation as my mom. I believe it would be very heartbreaking to them. Thank you for listening. In all sincerity, Rita Eastwood. So those are all the items. Kathy, is there anything else that came? Jared? Nothing? Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on, we have introduction and consideration of ordinances and resolutions. This time, I entertain a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings on the following ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 5021, ordinance 5121, ordinance 5221, resolution 5321, resolution 5421, ordinance 5621, ordinance 5721, resolution 5821, resolution 5921, ordinance 6021, ordinance 6121, and ordinance 6221.
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
I will make a motion to suspend the rules requiring three readings of tonight's ordinances and resolutions.
Second?
A discussion on suspending the rules for three readings. Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the motion on the suspended rules?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Ordinance 50-21, ordering amending section 13301 of the kind of federal ordinance of the City of Medina, Ohio, relative to the Chief of Police Association memberships.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Chief Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance is granting permission for membership in the FBI National Academy Associates.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Ordinance 50-21 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 5121, ordering authorizing the mayor to enter into a tenant-based rental assistance agreement with the Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority, M M H A, for the fiscal year 2020 Community Housing Impact and Preservation Program chip.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mayor Hamel?
I'll take that.
Oh.
And actually, point of order, we do need the emergency clause for this. It was approved at Finance Committee on March 22, so I don't know if you want to do that after I give an explanation. I'll give a quick explanation. This is a contract between the City of Medina and Medina Metropolitan Housing Authority for that entity to implement and administer the tenant-based rental assistance activity, which is part of our P Y 20 chip grant. They've done this before. Basically, this is $16,000 that goes to a combination of first month's rent, security deposit, and/or utility deposits for income-eligible households. The emergency clause is requested because the grant is in effect, and we would like to have these funds accessible as soon as possible once we have somebody to administer them. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to add the emergency clause?
Mr. President, I will amend my motion regarding ordinance 5121 to include the emergency clause.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes 6-0.
Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 51-21 passes 6-0.
Ordinance 5221, ordering amending the program and activity fee structure for the Medina Community Recreation Center.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This request is to amend a variety of different fees and rates in our current rate structure, including increasing the maximum allowable fees for certain programs due to reduced class sizes with COVID, creating semi-private lessons to allow for smaller group classes, adding a category for specialized classes that require significant investment for the recreation center, as well as establish a variable rate structure for vendor fees and sponsorships for special events. The point of the vendor fees and the special events is to help offset the costs so that we can hopefully offer these for free to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on the ordinance? Will the clerk please call the role in the adoption of the ordinance?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Ordinance 5221 passes 6-0.
Resolution 5321, a resolution authorizing participation in the Ohio Department of Transportation's Cooperative Purchasing Program for the purchase of sodium chloride and rock salt.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause is requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on the emergency clause and the resolution. Mr. Pacoli?
Thank you, Mr. President. I know it seems a little strange, ask for the emergency clause, but ODOT sent this to us on March 12. The turnaround time, which Kathy, Pat, and I work on, the submit date is April 30, so it's a tight window. This is for annual participation in Rose Salt with Cooperative Purchasing Program to the state.
Thank you. Any further question or discussion on the resolution or the emergency clause? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 5321 passes 6-0.
Resolution 5421, a resolution authorizing the mayor to accept a $30,000 grant from the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, O E P A, pertaining to the electric vehicle charging stations for the city hall parking deck.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Mr. President?
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and/or the resolution. Is this Mr. Patton?[1699.65]
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and/or the resolution. Is this Mr. Patton?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, we were, we had initially applied to have funds for eight EVC agencies, the level twos. EPA came back and awarded us $30,000, which is sufficient to pay for four of these charging stations, and that's, we're requesting to seek approval of that and install those.
Any emergency clause?
The emergency clause is because they're asking for our response. We have to return the agreement by the end of April.
Okay, yeah, this, we went through this with the parking deck. We have spaces available for these charging stations. We anticipate having charging stations. We're looking for grants, and we have other grants out there to try to get additional charging stations because we have room for eight charging stations in our deck, which hopefully we will be a leader in northeast Ohio with respect to moving to a more green situation with respect to more vehicles. So we appreciate your efforts in trying to seek these grants. Is there any further discussion on the emergency clause and/or the resolution? Will the clerk please call the role on the adoption of the emergency clause?
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the resolution?
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Resolution 54-21 passes six zero.
We have ordinance 55-21, which is going to be designated specifically as a first reading, which is an ordinance authorizing the law director to prepare the necessary documentation to transfer city lot 9774PPN number 02819821391, containing 0.1874 acres of land to the Medina City Development Corporation or CIC. Mrs. Marshall, do you want to talk about this?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the parcel that was created as a result of the unused portion for the construction of the parking deck that we are requesting to have transferred to the CIC for the downtown redevelopment project now known as the Liberty View Project. I'd like to make this request subject to the appraisal report being prepared, which we are in the process of getting a quote for that, as well as the law director working with the economic development director on a reimbursable agreement for the CIC to reimburse the city on the land because, as you recall, we have the other parcel that was transferred to the CIC a couple of years ago, and now this one, then we can combine those two and then enter into the lease agreement with the developer to lease the land for their project.
And my understanding is that once we get the number of what the vacant land is going to be worth, because there used to be a building on there which will be razed, the city will be fully reimbursed, even though I think back in 1984, the land was purchased by the city or given to the city for $6,000. Is that correct?
So the city purchased the property from the church, whatever church that was there, for $6,000, and I believe that was over the 83, end of 83 going into 84 timeframe.
So whatever the value of the land is that was donated to the CIC for the development to occur on that parcel, which we did specifically through the CIC through a land lease agreement so we could maintain control over that parcel for 50 years, we will be fully reimbursed, so the taxpayers will not lose any money on that transfer, and also the ground rent will be over $200,000 over the 50-year period, which will give additional money to the city above and beyond that of what was the worth of that. And plus, it'll create additional living places and some other retail places on the bottom, which will generate tax revenue for the city.
That's correct.
Thank you. Is any further discussion or comment on that?
I have a question.
Mr. Lamb?
This is Marshall. The CIC is a private corporation, but what is the membership? Can you tell me what the membership is of the CIC?
So currently, the board is made up of the mayor, myself, Councilman John Coyne, Councilman Jim Shields, and Councilman Paul Rose. Those are the five voting members. We have two non-voting members from the community, which is Bert Humple, who is a local certified public accountant who advises us on the financial side of it and accounting and taxes, and then also Rick Dillsaber, who works for a developer, and he serves in an advisory role on development concerns.
Thank you. So while it's a private corporation, it's obvious that the corporation that we formed, I think, in 2011?
It was actually formed in 2012.
2012. Is really, is really headed up and controlled by the city, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So it's, while it sounds like it could be private, in effect, the city really is the determiner of what goes through the CIC and how the money is spent?
That's correct at this time, yes.
Thank you.
And it was done so with the intent of that, that it was specifically set up like that because we did want to maintain control of it until such time it would be transferred over to a private individual. We thought it would be wise to have control over it in initial years.
Absolutely, and it was wise. And it's, you know, it's to the benefit of this community that we created the CIC in the first place, and the result of this, this project is a result of that. And when this project comes to fruition, the community will see the benefit, you know, clearly see the benefit. And by the way, the church that was on that property was a Baptist church.
Yes, and I think at the time when the city purchased the property, I believe you were the mayor at that time.
I was. Thank you.
According to the minutes that I was reading.
Thank you. No more questions.
And I think that at some point, maybe the CIC board could be expanded to keep the government control and maybe a few more community members.
At some point, that would happen. And also, just for clarification purposes, the ground lease has not been entered into with the developer yet, and the developer has no rights to use the parking deck. It's open to public, first-come, first-served basis. So there's been discussion in the CIC that we may want to do that, but it's determined by the law director, we don't want to do that, so we're not doing it. Mr. Rose?
I wanted to thank you, Mr. Chairman, that the parking deck and the apartment building are not connected. There is no physical connection to them.
That's correct. There's no plans for that to be physically connected, and just as a point of clarification, the CIC does not own the parking deck. The city owns the parking deck, and currently, we do know that there are some downtown residents that live in this area that are already currently using the parking deck, and it's not part of the Liberty View project. So the public is already using the parking deck residential.
Thank you. Any further question or comment?
Mr. President?
And Mrs. Hazelton?
Just to clarify, Ms. Marshall, so you are saying that we are not giving any permits for parking lot parking for the Liberty View development?
That is correct. We are not giving out any parking permits for the Liberty View development or for any other purposes.
And we are not reserving any spaces for the Liberty View apartments, correct?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Simpson?
Just one other comment, Mrs. Marshall, and thank you again for you and the administration's work on this. As I spoke at the end of our last meeting on council comments about the less than truthful comments that were being circulated by the once "save the courthouse," now it's "stop government waste" committee, again, I wouldn't call things lies, I will say less than truthful. In Mrs. Walker's letter that was submitted tonight for reading, those comments that were made, again, were less than truthful. And I just hope the people that started voting on April 6th in the early voting will check the facts because the facts that are being circulated are less than truthful. Thank you.
Well, Danny, I wanted to address that for a minute. Ms. Walker was correct. There is an agreement, there was a proposed agreement for reserved parking and parking permit. It was an agreement drawn together as a draft, and Ms. Walker did request that. We provided it to her. What she is referencing was in the draft. I think the point is the council and the administration took it into consideration to decide, we're not, we're not doing this. And so if we're going to get into it, I want to make sure the record's clear.
And Mr. Huber, I thank you so much for that comment because that was stated by Mrs. Marshall and now by you, but in the letter that was submitted, it was stated as fact, and it was less than truthful. But you're right, it was talked about. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments? Okay, now we're moving on to ordinance 56-21, an ordinance amending section 3102E of the salaries and benefits code of the city of Madana, Ohio relative to the MCRC part-time pay scale, facility monitor temporary assignment.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields.
The emergency clause has been requested, I moved to add it this time.
My second includes the emergency clause.
Discussion on emergency clause and the ordinance. Mr. Worley?
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a temporary pay increase for two part-time employees at the rec center. We are currently operating with three of seven allocated full-time positions due to COVID-19 and an unexpected long-term absence by one of those full-time employees. So the emergency clause is requested because the two individuals have been performing these additional responsibilities since March 12th.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment? Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause?
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Motion passes six zero.
Will the clerk please call the role in adoption of the ordinance?
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Ordinance 56-21 passes six zero.
Ordinance 57-21, an amendment section 5058 of the kind of federal ordinance of the city of Madana, Ohio relative to animals and fowl, feeding of animals prohibited with the addition of a new section 55.082.
Moved to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance came out of Special Legislation Committee, I think it was in March. I can't remember the exact date. Couple of things I want to make clear. One is, this didn't, wasn't, didn't germinate overnight. This was, this was the final product, I think, of probably what began in 2012, when Parks of Recreation Director Jansen and I, really responding to concerns that were raised at neighborhood meetings that we had, ward meetings. At that time, they were particularly about deer, and it was always a difficult issue. We recognized the difficulty of that issue, and in good part, we recognized also that there were people that came to the neighborhood meetings that simply loved to have the deer in their backyard and photograph them, and there were folks who were very upset by the fact that the deer were there due to damage to their property. So over the course of a year or so, working with the Parks and Rec Director, and he did almost all the work, we developed a website, and in the website, it explained what you could plant, what would deter deer, things you could do that would deter deer so that they wouldn't come into your yard. And it also included that if you had an issue with the deer, that the city would send a, one time would send an employee there to help you to take a look at your plants and make other suggestions and things you could do. That began around 2012. A few years ago, we began to discuss the issue of feeding wild animals more in total. And I guess one thing that bothers me about the response we have gotten in different forms is when we held the meetings where these, where this ordinance, this ordinance finally came out of, these meetings took place over a number of years, and the only input that we got really from residents over that time was most recently by four folks that came and did talk to us, and none of the four, while one of them, I think, worked in town, none of the four lived in town. They lived in the township. We didn't get any feedback during the meetings. None of these ordinances that we're talking about tonight, or anytime we have counsel, they don't just come out of, they're dreamt up like the day before we come here. Some of them are years in, are years in the making, and this one in particular, because it was the difficulty of issues that had been raised. We did not want to pit neighbor against neighbor. We did not want neighbors videoing people. What we were trying to do is find a balance to understand the issue of the wild animals in this setting that we have, which is an inner-city-built-out area, but a city also that has more parkland per capita than any other city in the state of Ohio. Calling the deer was ruled out. Okay, no matter what anybody says, calling the deer is ruled out. That has been the position of the city since we began this discussion back in 2000. You can shake your head, but call-
Deer, deer, I'm shaking my head, it's wrong. If the Department of National Research handles a lot of it, they said many communities have tried, and no deer. And then I'm here explaining to you to do a call.
Okay.
Okay.
With all due respect, this is not a discussion?
Okay, sir, ma'am, please, no more comments. Thank you. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lamb.
In the city of Medina, from the beginning, calling the deer has been ruled out. So that was taken off the table. So what we worked on was, from the beginning with the website and city help, through to this ordinance, was a way to try to balance the issue of animals, what the animals were, what the issues are, and how to do it in a way that was not going to be severe. And so over the past couple of years, working particularly with Mr. Huber, with the law director, we worked on language that is in this ordinance that we thought gave us that balance. And while, you know, we have been portrayed as people that want to starve animals with pictures of starving dogs, I have been name-called in emails with more words, more bad words, I guess, than I ever saw anybody put in a sentence. To what end, I'm not sure. What purpose, I don't think it has one, because everybody here is working to try to solve an issue, and we have been working on it for a long time. And we understand that regardless of what we do, some people might agree and some people may not, but we believe we have come, I believe, we have come up with the best thing that we can do. And if you look at the language, I don't know, maybe I don't look like an outdoorsman.
Well, I'm-
I spent-
So, all right, the language that you guys have come up with after all these years, I can't believe that this is what we want to come up with.
Again, this is not a discussion.
Well-
You can't engage, okay, I'm sorry, let's stop the engagement. Don't engage him anymore.
I'm not engaging, I'm just looking at the-
Okay, thank you. Well, let's ask a question first of all, because Mr. Huber was directly involved in drafting the language with-
Let me read the language first.
Okay.
So what we have heard is that "no person shall purposely or knowingly provide food for and in the list of the animals you have." But it ends, that ends with "where such feeding causes or contributes to damage to the property of another or creates a public or private nuisance." So nowhere does it say, "you can't feed a feral cat or a dog that is not homeless." It only says, "if in fact it's damaging somebody else's property or it is causing a nuisance, that, that is the issue." And we concluded that this language and the way this ordinance is drafted, it would be used, most only used, in extreme cases, when people are obviously doing something that is causing damage to someone else's property or causing, causing a nuisance. is causing damage to someone else's property or causing a nuisance. And it was drafted, I think, in a way that is not severe. Mr. Huber?
We had a number of different drafts through the process. We looked at other ordinances from other cities. This ordinance is actually, it was ultimately chosen. It's been on the books for quite some time in the city of Brunswick. I talked extensively with the administrative officials who passed this ordinance in Brunswick in deference to what Mr. Huff had to say. I think he's exactly right. This is not going to solve the deer problem. Really, this allows for Brunswick or the city of Medina, if we pass it, to intervene in an extreme situation. This would be a hard ordinance to try to prove in court. Really, what this ordinance does is allow the city to come in and try to mediate and fix an extreme situation. And there's only been a few situations in Brunswick, and it worked pretty well. The bottom line is, the ordinance actually worked pretty well. Right now, we don't have anything that allows for the city of Medina to try to intercede if there's a problem between a property owner and another who is bringing in some. The problem that Brunswick, from my knowledge, did have an issue with, there was such a volume of animals that the city was able to try to mediate that and fix an extreme situation. There's an awful lot that this ordinance does not fix. It just doesn't. And I think everybody here acknowledges that fact. Does not fix the deer issue in many respects. But if we're faced with nothing on the books that allows us to do anything, which we don't have right, we have nothing right now, and we have something where we can try to mediate a problem, the general thought was that this is better than not having anything. I guess folks could disagree on that. I can tell you that in Brunswick, this has worked reasonably well. It's not too heavy-handed. Nobody here at the city of Medina wants, my office is busy enough, I don't need to become the wild animal enforcer. And I know that the police department does not want to be the wild animal police. But if we have an extreme situation where we can try to intercede, discuss a property damage problem with another property owner who is possibly causing it, we try to fix it. And that's it. This ordinance does not prohibit a person from feeding a starving animal. A starving animal is not going to be the cause of property damage to another. And additionally, from the lawyer's side of it, this ordinance is not going to be a violation of Goddard's Law, much as though people seem to think. We can get into that discussion. I'm not going to go into it. But we've looked at that. If an animal is causing actual property damage and something needs to be done, it's not going to be considered a violation of Goddard's Law. So we've looked at the issue from a lawyer's point of view. I guess if we get into court on it, a judge can tell us. But this has worked in Brunswick reasonably well. It only addresses an extreme situation, and that was the ultimate rationale behind special legislation's consideration at this point.
Well, Mr. Huber, thanks for the efforts. I know we've discussed this a lot, and we definitely don't want to prohibit the feeding of stray animals. I think we want to be able to do that, and we do permit that to continue. And I think Mr. Huber is exactly correct that in extreme situations where people intentionally try to violate the law, you know, try to take advantage of their neighbor, which is not a neighborly thing to do, at least the city could step in and now has the ability to intercede and try to help solve that problem, which, I mean, he's correct. It's the best we can do. We're not going to solve all the problems, and I do understand that this doesn't solve any problems. But you are correct. A lot of the emails received that we say, "you can't feed any animals," that's not correct at all. And unfortunately, social media tries to create a buzz on things to get people enlightened about something that, you know, you just have to read the ordinance to understand, you know, we're trying to solve a bigger problem. We want people to feed stray animals. I mean, I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't want that to occur, because we understand you don't want a starving animal. That is, and that's not humane, and we do not want to promote that type of behavior. So does anybody else have any other comments?
Mr. President?
Mrs. Hazelton?
Thank you, Mr. President. First and foremost, I represent Ward 1. And today, I noticed that Mr. and Mrs. Huff and Mr. Blackmore, who submitted an email to be read aloud, both reside in Ward 1. My responsibility as your council representative is to listen to the residents of Ward 1 and to follow up with them. In the discussions that I've had with people in Ward 1, they disagree with the legislation as a number of you do. But I do feel that because the people that I have personally talked to, the people that have individually reached out to me, not people who clicked on an online petition and sent an automatic email, to me, that's not an effective way to communicate. I would have much preferred a phone call or even a text message or an invitation to call. But that being said, I cannot in good conscience vote yes on this ordinance. I think it needs some tweaking. I realize that with all due respect to the people that created it and have been working on it for a very long time, I just don't think that it's there yet. So I will not be supporting this issue this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Mr. Simpson?
I kind of agree with Jess. I mean, I understand because, you know, long before, you know, we started discussing this amongst ourselves or at committee meetings, attending public meetings, that was the public ward meetings, that was always the number-one hot topic, you know? What are you going to do about the deer? It was only recently, and for me anyhow, recently, within the last few months, that I actually received two emails, and it was both in the same area, not in my ward, about feral cats. And we had the SPCA here, and he addressed, Mr. Huff addressed that the main problem in the city of Medina is in the northeast quadrant down by the shopping center. And he explained how, you know, that they, for their procedure for the SPCA is they would set out a trap, which could get a skunk, a raccoon, you know, or a cat. And if they trapped a cat, the policy, and they followed some of the state statutes, is they had to take the cat, have it neutered or spayed, and then return the cat to the same area that they picked it up in. So it wasn't really addressing the feral cat, it was addressing the multiplication of cats, which is a great thing. And they were, the SPCA is finding it harder and harder time to locate veterinarians that's willing to do that at such a reduced cost. But the deer problem's always been an issue. In my ward, I had a neighbor that spent $500 a month in feeding not just a deer, but wild animals. They'd have troughs out in their front yard. The surrounding neighbors contacted me several times to come over and look at their yard, because if the ground was moist at all, the deers were tearing up their turf, just trying to cross those yards to get to where the neighbors were, the neighbor was feeding. And I talked to the neighbor a couple of times, both times got the door slammed in my face. So I understand the ordinance as far as not being too strict, that it would give the city a right to mediate if there is a severe case that happens. And I do think the severe cases are far and in between. We are not going to solve the deer problem. We are not. I mean, as Mr. Huff addressed, we're not going to solve the deer problem in the city of Medina. And it gets worse and worse, and as I've said many times, because our surrounding communities, the city's built out, but the surrounding communities aren't. Medina Township, Bonville Township, they keep taking away green space, and the deer move this way. And through our conversations with the state, which again, the deer are the state of Ohio deers, that you could call three quarters of the herd, and it would solve the problem for a year, maybe a year and a half. After that, you'd be back to just about the same numbers. So I understand that, you know, we've worked for years, and your legislation bill worked to develop this procedure where we could mediate in extreme situations. And it doesn't prevent people from feeding starving animals. And I think that the public needs to know that. And my only question is, as Mrs. Hazelton said, is to, maybe we could rework this and remove dogs and feral cats. I think if we could do that, because I don't think the dogs and feral cats are going to be causing the extreme damage, I would be supportive of it. Because right now, the general population, people in our community are emailing and calling, saying that, you know, this is cruelty. And my comment and every council comment is, you know, be kind to one another. And that includes being kind to animals. So I would request that maybe we move this back to committee and, if possible, reword it to remove the dogs and cats and still address the situation of where neighbors are experiencing extreme damage. So I, right now, I won't be supporting the issue.
Mr. Lamb?
I'm not sure about the, I guess, it's not clear to me if we remove the feral cats and the dogs. When you look at what the ordinance, from my perspective anyway, when I look at what the ordinance says, if there's a cat, for example, when we owned a building downtown, we always had cats come, we always had cats. So we always would collect the cats and take them to the vet and do whatever. And generally, we just adopted the cats. I am not prohibited from doing that. We would feed the cats because the cat was behind the store, but then we would get them fixed, and we would generally adopt them. If you live on a street and there is a feral cat and you want to feed the cat, the ordinance does not prohibit that. And to me, that, the argument about the starving and whatever, doesn't hold up. If there is a dog that wants, needs to be fed, and apparently it doesn't have an owner, and you choose to feed the dog, you can feed the dog. That was why the clause was, the clause that's in this ordinance, that's the reason I voted for it. Because we worked for a long time to find an ordinance that had some give in it, and it wasn't, "you can't do that." And I think, you know, the issue was raised here. I think originally, we were looking at just deer. Once we looked at it and we felt that we couldn't prohibit people from feeding, because it would include you couldn't feed birds, I remember that discussion that we had, whether that was truth or not. And so what we came up with is you can feed squirrels, chipmunks, possums, whatever you choose to feed. I have a friend who lives near me, and he has a little thing, and he feeds squirrels. He has a wife who's handicapped, and she likes to watch the squirrels. It's hooked on a tree. It's fine. You know, he's doing no damage to anybody. But I think the ordinance as a whole has this escape hatch that's wide open. I mean, it would sink the whole ship. Because you'd have to be able to demonstrate that you are, that what you are doing is with that animal, whatever it is, is causing a nuisance or causing property damage. And as we have been told, and anybody who clearly thinks this through would understand, that's a tough thing, that's going to be a tough thing to prove. Yeah, you can prove it in extreme cases, though. Because if you're putting out a giant bucket of corn to feed geese, and you're putting a bucket of corn out every day, and the geese are causing a really problem for all the people that live by you, that's something that I think we'd go and try to mediate. Or if you are feeding a lot of feral cats, and those feral cats are simply wandering through the neighborhood, going into people's garages and climbing on their cars or whatever, that's something that we would want to mediate. And the word "mediate" is really an important word here. It isn't, "you're going to come and get arrested." It isn't that you're going to get a ticket and get hauled away. It's like everything else that we do here at the city. It's that we try to work things out in a pretty human way, in a way that is comfortable for people and doesn't pit people, one person against another. And I know everybody here that works here, and I know most of the people here really, really well, and that is how they work, is to try to make things work out. It's not to create victims, it's not to hurt animals. And so I see this as the best thing we can do in order to give us the ability to deal with these extreme cases. We all understand the deer issue. I appreciate the fact that we're built out, that we've taken away the habitat of these animals, and now we have to live with the animals. And it is okay to live with the animals as long as they are not causing a problem for somebody else, damaging their property or causing a nuisance. And the vast majority of people do not just arbitrarily point a finger at their neighbor and decide they're going to go turn them in for no good reason. Most people aren't like that. Or if they are, I haven't met them. Most people like Denny are kind. You know, they're looking to be a good neighbor, they're looking to be part of the community. And so I see this legislation as just being part and parcel of that. I disagreed with it, I think, year after year, until we came up with this approach. I mean, I don't even eat meat, so, and I got a rescue dog. And the dog before that was a rescue dog.
Well, Paul and Jim, I mean, what are your feelings? Do you want to move forward, or what do you want to do?
You know, I'm listening to Jess, I'm listening to Denny. Would it be the worst-case scenario if we have another reading and not vote on it tonight and give people some more time? I think we've done the best job we've done tonight of educating people a little bit more about it. I agree. I've got people in my ward that have serious issues with feral cats that I'm trying to help. I know we have issues with deer. I don't believe this is going to solve those issues with the deer, but I do want to help these people that have really had some serious issues with the feral cats. And I'm open to ideas. We've been talking about this at ward meetings since Bill said 2012. But I'm okay if we want to take a little bit more time and see if people have some better ideas on how this can be, so we can solve this issue for everybody, is what I'd like to do. I don't know that we'll change a lot in two weeks, if we wait two weeks or wait four weeks and do three readings, but I'm willing to have people give us some input, as long as people can give us input where they don't insult us to the point of wishing terrible things on us. People who care so much about animals that emailed us, boy, they don't seem to care too much about human beings. And it's really sad.
I agree. And that's not we want to-
Right. I'm not saying you, but I-
You want to educate, not hear it go down. You want to be there to help solve the problem.
But I'd rather all of us work together to find something that people feel good about with this legislation. And if it takes a couple more weeks, I do think we did a better job tonight getting the message out of what's involved here.
Paul?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Lamb pointed out one thing here, "mediate." That is the really key word to all of this, in that we're here to problem-solve. As our conversation that I had with the Huffs earlier, it's a problem. You know, maybe the person who's feeding these feral cats really has another issue. You know, maybe they need some more companionship, maybe they need to be put in a facility. We don't know. But what I'm saying is, is they, because my parents used to live across the street from a lady who, she was, she had Alzheimer's, but nobody realized it until they saw the cats. And then they went and they investigated, and here, the poor lady needed to be put away. All right? She was by herself, and I don't mean to be making light of it, but, you know, just, you know, here's a problem that this ordinance will help us see, that the obvious thing is, well, quit feeding the cats. Well, why, you know, keep doing the five whys. Why does he or she feed the cats? Why, why, why? And you'll get to the root cause. Okay? But I'm okay with having another reading or two to, maybe we can get a little more input and tweak this a little bit. But there is a problem. It has to be resolved some way, and we've got to start someplace. So-
Okay. What I hear is, I think we'll just-
Will you send it back to special legislation, then?
Either that or we could table whatever, everybody's, you want to table it for another meeting, or do you want to send it back to special-
I would like to see it sent back to special legislation.
What about Paul? How do you feel? Just digest it for another couple of weeks, get some more information?
Yeah, let's digest it a little.
Try to make some changes to it?
Right, if we can tweak-
I don't think we need to go back to special legislation to start over.
Okay. As long as we can tweak it.
I think we can make the changes, you know, while not going back to special legislation, the changes still could be made to it. What do you feel?
And the media that is watching can explain what Mr. Huber and Mr. Lamb explained, that we're not in favor of starving animals.
Uh huh.
But I would support-
Okay, so we'll just table it for a couple of weeks. Mrs. Patton, if you could just put that on the radar. We won't vote on this tonight. We'll table it and get some input from the residents again, talk to some of the residents that live around you to get some more information. I know we didn't have a lot of contact from residents of the city. We have a lot of contact from people outside the city. But again, our job is to represent the city, not the people in other states. So just so we know. Yes, Mrs. Hazelton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a public comment that came up on our Facebook feed. I want to make sure that that gets read and put into the record. I'm going to completely butcher this poor person's name. Aurelia Vitale Slaina says, "A stray animal, cat, or dog, which is domestic, was most likely dumped and abandoned. They did not choose this for themselves, either let people feed them or renovate a building for a shelter."
Okay, thanks. Did they say where they're from?
They did not.
Okay. All right, we'll table this, and then we'll move on. So we got Resolution 5821, a resolution approving and accepting capital grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources, ODNR, for lighting for the East Reagan Parkway Trail Project.
Moved to approve.
Second. Mr. Patton?
Thank you. This is a grant through the ODNR to finally light up East Reagan Parkway. As council knows, we're going to be rebuilding, or installing, a multipurpose trail from Court Street to just past Erlerker's Way to connect our trail to Reagan Park. With that project, we're installing some empty conduits for this lighting, this project. When we get it done, we'll have lighting on Reagan from Court all the way to past Ashwood.
Good. I mean, we've been talking about this for more than 12 years also, so-
It's another topic that came up at ward meetings continually.
Yeah, ward meetings, glad this is finally being addressed. Does anybody else has any comment on this resolution? A quick piece called "The Role and Adoption of the Resolution."
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coyne?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Resolution 5821 passes six zero.
Resolution 5921, a resolution asking the mayor to execute an economic development T-Rex transfer form for the Division of Liquor Control for the property located at 930 West Liberty Street.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause been requested. I moved add at this time.
My second includes emergency clause?
Discussion on emergency clause and resolution. Mrs. Marshall, issue?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. So this resolution is to authorize the mayor to execute the Economic Development T-Rex Transfer Form from the Division of Liquor Control for the property located at 930 West Liberty Street, which is the Los Cantoritos Mexican restaurant. And the emergency clause has been requested, as it has taken a couple of months for the, their legal team to locate and negotiate the terms of the purchase to acqui- Restaurant. And the emergency clause has been requested, as it has taken a couple of months for the, their legal team to locate and negotiate the terms of the purchase to acquire that permit. So if you remember, we started this back in January. So we want to help them out so that they can increase their foot traffic, which will then generate more sales for them and be more successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion or comment on emergency clause entered the resolution? A quick please call the role in adoption of the emergency clause.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 5921 passes six zero.
Ordnance 6021, an ordinance amending ordinance number 217, passed December 14, 2020, amendments to the 2021 budget.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
Thank you, Mr. President. These are two amendments. They're both in police department. They're pass-throughs where we receive money. We need appropriation to be allowed to spend it.
Thank you. Any further discussion? A quick please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 5921 passes six zero.
Ordnance 6021, an ordinance amending ordinance number 217, 20, passed December 14, 2020, amendments to the 2021 budget. 2020, carry forward.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Durham?
These are unspent 2020 appropriations being re-appropriated in 2021.
And just for clarification for the people that are here that may not know, we do a five-year budget planning, and we do what's called a carry forward. So if our department head does not spend the money that they're budgeted for the year, they can carry it forward to the next year. We don't take it back. Because if we take it back, what happens? They're going to spend it. So we let them save it and do a project later on. So we've been very successful in the city. I think there's only one other city in the state of Ohio that operates like that. It's down by Cincinnati. So the department has to do a great job of trying to save money where they can, so we can stretch the taxpayers' dollars for years in the future. That is why we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state of Ohio, and we're able to go through all these years without raising taxes, and we don't have financial troubles like most cities have. We're pretty good with our money, and we try to save it where we can. Any other discussion? A quick please call the role in adoption of the ordinance.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 6121 passes six zero.
And finally, ordinance 6221, an orange sunrise and mayor to enter to an agreement with USI Insurance LLC for the city's cybersecurity liability insurance for the period of April 13, 2021 through April 1, 2022.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved that we added at this time.
My second includes emergency clause? Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the cybersecurity for the city expired on April 1, so we signed a binder that we could authorize with requisition from April 1 to April 13. The reason that we need the emergency clause is I need to sign the papers by tomorrow to keep the policy in place. The reason that it came to council so late is because the cyber insurance has gone up across the country. They tried to shop other vendors and were unsuccessful. This is about a 91% increase over what we paid last year, because so many cities have been victimized by cyber fraud. And of course, the insurance companies are paying out those bills. Now Darren's done a great job of locking down our system, and we're constantly reinforcing with staff not to open things, attachments in particular, from people you are not expecting or you don't know. We have a method through the IT department of searching it first and seeing if it's safe or not safe, so we don't miss something of somebody trying to get us information. But there are a whole group of people that, you know, this is their job all day, is to try to take over governments, companies, and then hold your IT ransom until you pay some exorbitant fee to get it back. And that's where the insurance is getting hit for it. So we need the emergency clause. I need to sign it tomorrow, and I apologize that it got to council so late.
We appreciate that. Thank you. And it's kind of disappointing that it almost doubled in price, the premium price, but we have no choice. So. Any further discussion on emergency clause entered ordinance? A quick please call the role in adoption of emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Resolution 6221 passes six zero.
And finally, ordinance 6221, an orange sunrise and mayor to enter to an agreement with USI Insurance LLC for the city's cybersecurity liability insurance for the period of April 13, 2021 through April 1, 2022.
Moved to approve.
Second. Discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. Shields?
The emergency clause has been requested. I moved that we added at this time.
My second includes emergency clause? Discussion on the emergency clause and the ordinance. Mayor Hall.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the cybersecurity for the city expired on April 1, so we signed a binder that we could authorize with requisition from April 1 to April 13. The reason that we need the emergency clause is I need to sign the papers by tomorrow to keep the policy in place. The reason that it came to council so late is because the cyber insurance has gone up across the country. They tried to shop other vendors and were unsuccessful. This is about a 91% increase over what we paid last year, because so many cities have been victimized by cyber fraud. And of course, the insurance companies are paying out those bills. Now Darren's done a great job of locking down our system, and we're constantly reinforcing with staff not to open things, attachments in particular, from people you are not expecting or you don't know. We have a method through the IT department of searching it first and seeing if it's safe or not safe, so we don't miss something of somebody trying to get us information. But there are a whole group of people that, you know, this is their job all day, is to try to take over governments, companies, and then hold your IT ransom until you pay some exorbitant fee to get it back. And that's where the insurance is getting hit for it. So we need the emergency clause. I need to sign it tomorrow, and I apologize that it got to council so late.
We appreciate that. Thank you. And it's kind of disappointing that it almost doubled in price, the premium price, but we have no choice. So. Any further discussion on emergency clause entered ordinance? A quick please call the role in adoption of emergency clause?
Lamb?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Shields?
Yes.
Simpson?
Yes.
Coin?
Yes.
Hazelton?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Ordnance 6221 passes six zero.
Counsel comments. Mr. Simpson?
Short and sweet. Everybody, please just be kind to one another. Thank you.
Other counsel comments. Mr. Rose?
Thank you, Mr. President. For those of you who do Facebook, there's a Save the Courthouse Facebook page out there. Search on Save and Make Medina History. Take a look at it. With that, there's been a lot of comment that I've been trying to answer. I'm not getting all of them for some reason. My wife will tell me, hey, you didn't answer this one. I didn't see it. So, but anyway, there was one thing there. The people are saying that our meetings are not publicly advertised well enough. Well, they're not looking far enough. Okay? It's in the Gazette. It's on our front page, on our webpage, and it's in Facebook, on the Facebook page. So they just don't want to find it, I guess. And I got pulled into the issue one thing. And I'm not going to be as kind as Denny. They're just bold-faced lies. Okay? Sorry, Danny. I respect you. But they're just bold-faced lies. Okay?
Don't be sad.
She knew. Pat Walker knew when she wrote that letter that she had John read, that it was a draft. She had to know that, because she knew that there couldn't be an executed lease agreement until we passed this, these, the replat of the land. She knew that as a lawyer. And if she didn't know that as a lawyer, she's a real bad lawyer, in my opinion. So we, as a city, need to put these people in their place and vote yes on issue one. All right? We, look, okay, right here, we passed an ordinance here today, just a little bit ago, to reappropriate the money that we didn't spend last year, that we saved from last year. $12 million. Okay? That's good financial management. We're not wasting anything here. John, the mayor, these department heads, they bust their asses. Yes, I said asses, and I mean it. Anybody offended? Okay?
It's actually a biblical term, so you're good.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The D's. But anyway, and geez, they are. Son of a gun. Okay, I am appalled that these people are doing this. They're dragging in people to spread the lies, spread the misconceptions of what we're doing here. And I do believe that there's one person in the Medina County courthouse system who's behind it all, because she wants her own courthouse. All right? She doesn't want to move in with the rest of them. She wants her own courthouse. And so she's driving these people. And this is my opinion. I've looked at all the facts and figures, and this is the only thing I can come to. And I would love somebody to prove me wrong. I really would. They better have some facts to prove it, because I'm not going to let them bamboozle me like they're bamboozling some of the people in the public to make it look like we're wasting money. We are not. The TIF, John, I'm going to steal your thunder. The TIF that we're using here that was created for the parking deck, there's certain properties in this apartment building dwelling is one of them, where the properties are valued at this level here. When it's done, it's valued at this level here. There's a tax increase. The city gets the tax increase to repay the monies that we put into the parking deck. So yes, the developer's paying for the parking deck, but that's all he's doing, because he would be paying the taxes anyway. So we get, we get the benefit. We get a new amenity for the city, for everybody to use. Everybody, Pat Walker, did you hear that? Everybody to use, and we, we will all benefit from it. Okay? So please, vote yes on issue one. Yeah, yeah, that's dribble. That's, that's, that is dribble. Okay? They're liars. Next time you see them, call them liars, because they're putting it in print. Mr. Huber, can we sue them for libel, slander? Because I would really love to, because telling us that we're wasting money is, is, is a lie, especially when we saved $12 million last year, budgeted money.
It's extremely insulting, actually.
Yes. So, yes, I'm tired.
Well, don't hold back.
I'm hungry.
Yeah.
You want me to let loose?
No, 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 no. I just say, you're doing a great job. I mean, you're expressing your opinion, and that's great.
Thank you. But no, no, this is a passion, and if anybody was offended by my comments, sorry, but tough, tough. Deal with it. This is the real world.
All right. I think our ratings just went up, but that's good. Thanks, Paul. I just want to add one more thing, and you know, I too support issue one. I've been on council for 23 years or 20. I don't even know how long it's been so long.
23.
23 years I've been on.
Phil's counting.
And I don't know if I have a reputation, but I think the department has to think I'm a little fiscal conservative.
Uh, yeah.
I don't like them to spend any money. So, I mean, we're not wasting money. I think the city is really trying to use and spend the taxpayers' dollars wisely. And the initial joint venture that we had with the county building another courthouse for $8 million, that was a great deal, but we're not doing that now. Now we have another opportunity to move into the 1969 courthouse. And again, it's not as great of a deal as it would have been getting a new court facility, but you know, it's about $5 million, and it's still a pretty good deal, because we know that if we had to do it on our own, it's going to cost eight to 10 million. And we just don't have that money, and I don't think anybody wants to support that. So I'm for issue one to try to do it. What was that? Oh, yes. He just reminded me. We have our first budget meeting Wednesday, and they're always great, the departments like them. So if you want to come and see what we do in our budget meetings, it'll be great.
It's the most interesting night of the month.
Are you done?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay.
I call next.
Anyway, issue one is a confusing issue. And simply vote yes on issue one, I think, is the message. Paul put it really well, working hard on a campaign to do that. And I appreciate all the work you're doing on that, Paul, so that we can, we can win this and move the court, save the city money, not only short-term but long-term. Bob Hyde, Bob Hyde, who, I apologize to you, because you called me.
I actually sent a message for winning for 34.
Yeah, you, well, my, yeah, that's my wife. She didn't remind me enough to call you back, and I sincerely apologize on her behalf. But this is just a great thing. You know, I know your family. I know, I know, I know, I know your family. I don't know all the people through history, but I know your family well, and Bob in particular. I mean, he's a local treasure. He is clearly a local treasure. Of the four people that I think, you know, the significant players in town, you know, Bob's in that top four. You know, I mean, Fred Greenwood and Roger Smalley, my wife, and, and not in that order. And Bob, you know, I brought a picture with me tonight to show the service director, because this is a picture I found of the original water tower that was located right over here. And I had a different picture of it, but I found this picture. And maybe I stole it from your, from Bob's website. I'm not sure. But I frequently come up and I talk about things I found, but then when I think about it, I frequently think I find them on his website, because he's such, if you go on his website about the city, it's such a detailed history of both the built city and the people part of the city, all hooked together. It's a resource, you know, beyond imagining. And he keeps expanding it and doing more. And I have relied on it for years and relied on him for years for things I need to know or wanted to know, or things I was working on. And without him, we would be, we would, we would be, it would be so much more empty. I mean, he has the history of every building, of every building on the square and beyond, down to the person, from the person that built it, to the last person who did business there.
Every proprietor dating back to the original building, there's not many 89-year-olds that created an app on a phone, on a cell phone, that you pull up to a building that gives history dating back to the 1800s of every proprietor, who that person was. It's so important to remember our community, what we stand for. Yes, we have to be progressive, but you've got to remember where we've been. And what made the city so great? You had three tires, things that destroyed the city. Look at it now. The square is gorgeous. There's an Ascadian in Medina, or in the state, that looks like Medina.
No, I know. People drive, you know, hundreds and hundreds of miles to, you know, New England or Pennsylvania, wherever you go, to try to find the perfect little village in town. And you can't find a place generally that looks like this, that's so complete. This is one, actually, the square is one of the most complete Victorian restorations in the state, because it was, it is complete. And, but it is important, what, you know, what Bob does too, is that he includes, that he includes the people, you know, because, and I really appreciate you bringing this and asking us about, about the marker to recognize the history of the family on the street that we have spent a long time on South Broadway. You think that the, that the animal thing was a long time. We have been discussing South Broadway since, since 1981, when I was running for mayor. That was the beginning. And we accomplished with this mayor and this city council and the administration, we really accomplished a lot, you know, by rebuilding that street and saving that, that, that brick street. But it is important to remember the people that played these key roles. And I frequently think about, about Fred Greenwood, whose picture is up on the wall, who was the mayor in the 60s and was president of council when I was elected mayor, and what he did for this community. And it bothers, you know, I feel uncomfortable sometimes because so many people, they have no idea of how some of these things occurred. And I remember Fred telling me one time that there was a developer that wanted to name a development south of town, and he wouldn't let them, because he said, "Everybody that lives in here, here, just lives in Medina. They don't live in some other named place." And he was the catalyst. He was the mayor who gave the paint, paid for the $1,000 of paint to paint the firehouse, which started the CDC's restoration of the downtown. And he was a, he was a firm believer in doing what's best for, best for Medina. And I've always felt good that as he got older, before he passed, he and I would meet at Bueller's out on, out of town, and we would have coffee and talk about the old days, when we used to argue in council and cause each other problems. But he was a good man, and like, It's not, it's not a thing. So to try to talk about the parking deck, try to talk about Liberty View, look over here while I steal your wallet. That's exactly what's going on there. Happier times, I would just like to say, had the privilege of watching the crew plant the trees at the McDowell House. For those of you that don't know, I live across the street from it. Please feel free to visit. It's the one with the crappy-looking porch. But I would just like to thank him for, you know, doing that, the McDowell Phillips House. I also want to thank everyone who came out to speak today because I do like to think that I, you know, I like to interact with my residents. I like to interact with, well, they're not mine, but of Medina. I, I do very much care about people's opinions, even when they differ from mine. Lastly, I would just like to congratulate Cups Cafe. They had their grand reopening this weekend after their big remodel. I was able to attend on Saturday. It looks fabulous in there. And that was all privately donated funds. And National Design Mart donated all of the countertops. So if anyone's ever done their kitchen, that's, that's a lot of money. So it looks really great in there. And I do firmly believe that people open their hearts and their wallets to Cups Cafe, maybe in part to our legislation that we passed last year where we gave them a little bit of money to get going with their services to the Food and Secure and, you know, the people that are homebound. So, you know, I want to congratulate them, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Any other council comments? It's only 20 to 10.
I was going to say, it's past my bedtime.
All right. With that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you. Why do I always say thank you? I'm just too polite. I did that last time.